So, at this time, I just ask if there's any comments on the consent agenda?
Um, my only comment is, I, tonight, am gonna be voting no on item D. Not because I'm not supportive of the Conference Center expansion, but shortly after the election, when sales tax did not pass, I had sent an email to the city manager to say I didn't feel comfortable, um, voting on any large allocations of money until we put all of the projects down on a piece of paper and compared their priorities to one another, because we're not gonna have enough money to do everything. So I'll be voting no on item D.
Okay. Ask for a motion.
I move, we, uh, accept the consent agenda. Second?
Call the rule, please.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes?
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes, on all but item D, no.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with the exception of item D, which carries four to one.
Now, go to section five, which is a public hearing. This is to consider vacating a utility easement near the College Hill Early Learning Center.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners of Lot, Director Public Works. Um, we have a request from the school district, uh, to vacate a five-foot-wide, uh, utility easement that has no public or, uh, private utilities such as West Art Kansas Gas or AT&amp;T. None of them are located. All of them have signed off on the easement. Um, it runs north-south on the property, um, and there's no benefit to us. We don't need it, and neither do any of the utility companies, uh, that would have rights, uh, to, uh, be in there. Hence, our recommendation is to vacate it.
Uh, Mayor, I find, I move that we find that no private rights will be injured or endangered by such vacation, and that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience thereby, and approve the first reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of the public utility easement of Lot 16 Hill View Track.
Second? Call the rule, please.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Now, go to item six, which is the general agenda. And item A is to consider an ordinance number seventy-four sixty-five.
In two thousand sixteen, the city commission wanted to address, uh, e-cigarettes, so we adopted a similar ordinance that, for the most part, mirrored the no-smoking ordinance that passed in two thousand eight. Um, but here's gonna be an overview of the ordinance and kind of what it all entails, but generally, it prohibits smoking in enclosed areas. That's, uh, public places, places of employment. Uh, there's many lists there. Uh, we brought that to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and they recommended, um, a full, uh, prohibition of, of smoking and vaping throughout all city, uh, park and recreation trail properties. Back in two thousand eight, there was at least one, uh, retail tobacco store in existence. The, the ordinance that passed by the citizens prohibited smoking in retail tobacco stores, which is why in Manhattan, uh, you don't see smoke shops where you can smoke inside, or hookah shops, or things of that nature. In two thousand sixteen, um, we were in a little bit different circumstances. We had at least three e-cigarette stores at that time who were allowing, uh, vaping to occur in their stores, and at the time, a majority of the city commissioners wanted to, uh, continue to allow vaping within those stores. So that was actually exempted in the two thousand sixteen ordinance. Jumping forward to today, when we combined them, we really wanted to treat them equally, so it was a question of whether to, uh, not allow, uh, smoking or vaping within retail stores, or to allow them, um, in both. And a majority of the commission was in favor of prohibiting them in retail tobacco and retail vaping stores. So that is reflected in the, the ordinance that was passed at first reading as well. Jumping to non-enclosed areas, which has come up recently after the first reading has passed, um, the ordinance that was passed at first reading prohibits smoking within twenty feet of any access point of a building or facility, so that could be a doorway or a window. Um, the two thousand eight ordinance only said twenty feet from an entrance. Uh, the access point is, is consistent with the state law, uh, so there was some ambiguity there that we cleaned up. Areas of food establishments such as patios and outdoor dining, uh, that would be prohibited, uh, within the ordinance that was passed at first reading. Um, and then we have a couple lists of other areas where we get into some, uh, you know, disagreement or, you know, questions from the public is related to that food service establishment in the outdoor patio or outdoor dining area that's connected to those, that food establishment and that license premise. We, we talk about license premise in the ordinance, and that generally means a, a drinking or establishment that serves alcohol. So the state law, and I'll address that here in a bit, but the, so the state law, uh, has a ten-foot-from-any-access-point rule. That's the minimum standard that all cities have to comply with. In two thousand eight, uh, the ordinance that was passed by citizens, uh, actually increased that to twenty feet, uh, and that was the entrance, uh, that was used, but we're, we're clearing that up to use access point now. So there's a couple options that commissioners can, uh, do for the second reading, and, uh, they could maintain the prohibition on, on smoking and vaping in patios and outdoor dining areas, um, as it was, uh, drafted and, um, passed in the first reading. You could remove, uh, that, um, and not prohibit smoking and vaping on patios, and then you would do what we've been doing for the last, uh, ten years, which is defer to that twenty-foot rule. It'd be twenty feet from any access point as opposed to any entrance, but that is, uh, what would be, that was what, that is how you would enforce smoking and vaping on patios. You could also remove the prohibition on patios, um, but then change the ordinance to mirror the state law and use the ten-foot rule, uh, from any access point. Twenty feet, um, you know, there are a lot of maybe outdoor patios out there that are smaller than twenty feet, so in effect, if you kept it how the, the way it is, it would essentially be prohibited in an outdoor patio be, if it wasn't, uh, if it was less than twenty feet in diameter from, from that entrance.
At this point, uh, anyone wishing to make a public comment, please come on up.
Good evening. Um, I'm Dennis K, um, the director for the Aggieville Business Association. So, uh, as a, uh, we did have a statement here, uh, that I'd sent, but the, uh, Aggieville Business Association Board of Directors strongly disagrees with your inclusion, uh, patios in the, in the new smoking vaping ordinance. We're very concerned that this is an unnecessary overreach that will create another negative impact to our local businesses that are small businesses that we're celebrating today. Uh, we would rather the city ordinance align itself more with the business-friendly Kansas State Ordinance.
Uh, my name is Stan Watt. Uh, in two thousand eight, I served as the chairperson for the Clean Air Manhattan, the group that created and promoted the current non-smoking ordinance. Uh, and this ordinance was overwhelmingly approved by the citizens of Manhattan and, and implemented in two thousand nine. And as Commissioner McKee pointed out, on the ballot, it was very clear that patios would be included in that. The citizens of Manhattan expected the patios to be included in that. Uh, this, this ordinance has been in effect for over ten years now, and has worked very effectively. Uh, there's some discussion, there was discussion at the time that the ordinance would decline the businesses, particularly for the bars and, and, uh, restaurants, and we found very clearly that this has not been the case. For as many people that might not go out to eat, there's much many, there's as many, if not more, people that go out to eat because they ha, can not have to experience, uh, clean air.
All right. We will close public comment, come back to the commission for discussion.
What numerous studies have found is that within, if you're within two to three feet of a smoker and outdoors, it is no different than being in an enclosed area where several smokers are smoking. Absolutely no difference. And even as you move away from the smoke, you still risk exposure to it, and no amount of secondhand smoke for any amount of time has positive health consequences, they're all negative. And so when people talk to me on this issue about choice and individual rights, that is what people who smoke in public prevent me from doing. If I happen to be in a public place, and I just happen to walk by someone who's smoking, that person just made a health decision on my behalf. I didn't have a choice to make that decision, they made it for me. And so, while I'm sympathetic to the arguments of the bottom line of your business, I don't think the bottom line of businesses is more important to protect than public health. And so, therefore, um, I am supportive of the ordinance because I think it lives to the spirit of what voters originally voted for, and I think it better protects public health.
Yeah, my thoughts haven't changed from the first reading. I voted against it because I, I see it as an overreach, and, and, and I'm not a smoker, and I don't vape, and I don't like it, and I voted for the ordinance in two thousand eight because I didn't want people smoking in the restaurants. But, but, but I think what happened, even if the intent, and that's another one that I'm not gonna buy into, I don't know what the intent was, you know, I read the thing, it, you know, to me, it was, we were banning it inside, not outside. And I think what we've got's working, and I was all for consolidating these ordinances, but, but now we've gone overboard. And it seems like maybe the next step here is just put a sign right next to our, uh, you know, uh, cellphone ordinance, so that when you come into the city, it says, "Smoke Free Manhattan." Can't smoke anywhere. Because what I see happening, this gets passed like it is, uh, the money invested by the small businesses there, you know, goes out the drain, and people are gonna move out on the sidewalk, and, and that's gonna be a problem for me. Because they're all gonna be out on the sidewalk, and now I am gonna inhale the secondhand smoke. I'm not doing that right now, but I will be shortly when this passes.
I make the motion, we approve ordinance number seven-four-six-five, amending Article Three and repealing Article Four of Chapter Seventeen of the Code of Ordinance to combine the smoking and e-cigarette ordinance with the deletion of Section seventeen-nine nineteen-two B of the proposed ordinance that prohibits smoking on patios. Call the rule, please.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee? Commissioner Morse?
No.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two.
We'll now move to, uh, item B, which is to consider approving Warner Park Memorial Master Plan, and the presenter is Alfonso Devia.
So for this presentation, I wanna do, uh, review the master plan draft document as presented to the park board on number, on November fourth, uh, discuss a little bit about the park board recommendation and feedback, uh, look at the Warner Park road options, and then a recommendation. And so this is the Warner Memorial Park Master Plan as proposed by the, uh, by the master plan that was presented to the park board on, on November fourth. And so this is what was recommended by the park board back in last year in October. And so this was the new restroom shelter and expanded parking over on the northeast side off of Shuss Road, uh, leaving the, uh, existing nine-hole course and not expanding it, uh, improving the trails that, that are, uh, around the, the park, uh, also looking to, um, consolidate some of the trails and the cross-country route, and that's something, uh, that we would want to do, uh, for maintenance purposes. Another item that was approved then was also the, uh, the new rockery gardens, and those are, uh, erosion control measures throughout the park. Uh, one of, one of the items that, uh, that was recommended as well is the, the ravine bridge on the south side, and that was to complete the loop around the trail, uh, throughout the, in twen, in two thousand seventeen, uh, when, uh, we sent out, uh, a community survey, that was one of the top items that people wanted to see, was a loop around the park, and so that bridge would, uh, would help, uh, achieve that. And then we also look at new pollinator meadows, so this is a measure that we, uh, internally, uh, including the, the, you know, park staff, uh, we wanted to, um, look at Warner Park as, you know, as, as it was intended, as a natural park. Um, we had a study actually from one, uh, from a student, a landscape architecture student, uh, which involved, um, uh, the diversity of, the biodiversity, uh, in the park. And so, uh, they had recommended, uh, ways that we could, uh, plant, uh, new vegetation, uh, we could do, uh, some different hay, uh, uh, measures. Right now, we hay, uh, the park about once a year. In some locations, we could extend that to two years. It would still combat the, the woody vegetation, uh, but it would leave that, uh, that, uh, biodiversity. And then, uh, it was also, um, it wasn't discussed as much, what was discussed was the, was the disc golf at this point, but throughout the process, throughout the master plan process, what we heard is, uh, uh, no one was in favor really of opening up the, the, the road. That was something that we heard, uh, many comments from the neighbors, uh, many of the neighbors still remember back when the, when the road was open, and when there were parties in the park, you know, in the, uh, eighties and, and early nineties. Um, that road was closed in nineteen ninety by park staff. Later, uh, in nineteen ninety-six, uh, when there was, um, some, uh, activity to, to really, uh, redevelop Warner Memorial Park, that came up again, and the commission actually, uh, favored, uh, not opening the road at that point. So in the discussion that happened earlier this month, um, the road came up again. Uh, when, uh, and, and the, the, the recommendation that the park board gave was to approve the Warner Memorial Park Master Plan as presented, with the exception of reconsidering opening up the road to the extent of Concept B. And now I wanna show you a couple of pictures so we can get an idea of what, what, what's happening here in Warner Park. So this is the existing shelter that is right here, right in the middle. That's the existing shelter, right there. This, these were built back in the, uh, in the fifties, uh, early sixties, um, and these were some of the shelters that, that were vandalized quite a bit back in the eighties. Uh, one of the shelters, uh, for, well, one of the restrooms further, uh, north of this area had to actually be removed at that point. So, throughout the conversation at park board, what was discussed was, all right, we wanna, we wanna make the park more accessible to the community. How do we do that? What's the point of opening the road? You know, do we, do we go back to the intent from the nineteen fifties and open the road to the full extent, or do we open it enough to, to a point that makes sense? So this existing shelter. And so this is that little area where Concept B is recommending, uh, the turnaround. And so one of the implications that we look at, if you could tell here, uh, as proposed in Concept B, is there would be quite a bit of, uh, regrading that would have to occur. We'd have to go in with some, um, some of the new gravel, uh, we would have to address some of the, uh, the drainage, uh, to be sure to keep that, that drainage, we'd have to put in a couple of pipes under any kind of, uh, roundabout in this area. So this is where that area, right around where B is, it's about, uh, about eighty to a hundred yards from where the shelter is. You can't really see the shelter. So with the direct implementation of the recommendation from park board to extend the road to Concept B, uh, we would also wanna look at, uh, possibly putting in a trail or a sidewalk to, to access, to access, uh, that shelter. Throughout the discussion at park board, uh, it was also discussed, um, you know, could, is there a way that we could test opening the road? Is there, is there a way that, um, that we could implement this? Well, there would be, and the easiest one would be if we went tomorrow and just opened up the gate, and it would be in use as it was intended in the nineteen fifties. However, there's also implications with that, because then, if we open up the road, how do we keep people on the road? And so right now, where the existing, uh, parking lot is, uh, there's quite a bit of limestone around the, uh, around the border, and that's to keep people out of the park. Because that was one of the other things that, uh, that, uh, occurred back in the, in the eighties and such. People were going out there in their four-by-fours and, and doing donuts and, and really tearing up the prairie. So with any of these options of opening up the road, we would need to consider, um, how, how do we keep people on the road? Uh, the recommendation by the park board was to, to, uh, extend the, the road opening to Concept B, which is around this area. However, uh, once we had, uh, once we discussed internally, you know, what, what's, what, what's the point of opening the road? We wanna make more accessible. We wanna get people somewhere, and that would be the shelter. And what would make most sense? And that would be, uh, and, and the more cost-effective, uh, something that's not as disruptive to the drainage and to the grading, and that would be to, uh, put in parking just to the, uh, to the north of the shelter, kind of where, there in the picture where I had, uh, my car. Uh, it's relatively flat. We would go in there, scrape out, uh, you know, a twenty-by, uh, fifty area for, for maybe about five vehicles, and a little turnaround that, in that area as well. So with this option as well, you know, if we open up the road, how do we keep people on the road? And again, those would be some of the same measures, so limestone, uh, some sort of metal fencing, maybe some posts and wires, and it wouldn't have to be throughout the whole, uh, road. There are areas where the ditch does, uh, go down quite a bit, um, maybe those vehicles with a little bit bigger tire could get through it, uh, for sure. And so that's where we're at. Uh, the recommendation, really, we're looking for feedback on the Warner Memorial Park Master Plan, uh, specifically on the motion set forth, uh, by parks, uh, by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Um, you know, we're looking, uh, you know, do we, do we keep the road closed? If so, then let's move on. If we want it open, all right, but to what extent?
Good evening. My name is Debbie DiVannudo, and I live in northeast Manhattan. For the three people that are new that don't know me, I am Kern Warner's great-granddaughter. I am the advocate for the road. Um, I fully approve this plan right here. I think this is great. The one thing I wanted to point out, that I pointed out to the park board the other night, which by the way, at the park board advisory meeting, I was the only person there. There was not a resident one there. In fact, I found it ironic, the gentleman there was there to pro, uh, present about the pavilion over at the city park, ended up speaking up for opening up the road. So, either I talked really good, or he, he heard what I was saying really well. But right now, if you take this road out, this is the only part of the park you're using. Twenty, thirty acres. You can't get up here. This park was paid for by the community. It's a community park. It's not a neighborhood park, it's a community park. It's supported by tax dollars. Every taxpayer has a right to go into that park, and to go into whenever they want. I don't wanna have to call and get a key so I can drive in because I can't walk in there because of a bad hip.
So, I'm Brenda Vandy, I live at three-zero-zero-five Cherry Hill, and there are two points that I'd like to make just to raise awareness, and that is, um, that the road is accessible right now. Anyone can come and check out a key. Just as if I wanted to use the shelter at the Points Avenue Shelter, I have to make a reservation. These are public facilities that do require a level of reservation or access, and we have that process in place. We have the process in place where somebody can get a key. The road is open, and I can tell you as a person who lives near the park, that there have been weddings that have taken place down at the end of the long road that, um, goes all the way towards the end. If we limit the parking area and put boulders in there, that's actually gonna limit and restrict access all the way down to where we call it the Boy Scout path, um, that connects. So I think the existing road actually gives greater access to people who want to use it for events.
Good evening. My name's Greg Spalding, I live at thirty-seven oh seven Bradford Terrace. Uh, I live on the park. Uh, first of all, I wanted to thank the city, and I wanted to thank the park, uh, commission for, for the work that they do to preserve this, this park. It's a, it's an amazing park. Uh, and as in your own literature, it says, "It is a gem, it's primitive, it's a precious resource of open space." I think that's a great description of it. The master plan calls for maintaining it as a natural and rustic with minimum development. To me, having cars and roads through this precious resource goes against the objective of the master plan, to maintain it as a primitive, natural resource.
Back to the commission for discussion.
I have a quick question. Is the gravel road that exists there now, was that also the original road that was there? Or did, was the original road paved and we like broke it up?
No, uh, that's the original road from nineteen fifty-nine, so the, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I guess I'll go ahead and start my comments. To me, that's the exact point of, if we open up back that road, I wouldn't expect us to pave it or do any kind of additional work. Um, so, I mean, if, if your concern is about preserving the nature, um, of the park, then opening up the road doesn't change what's already been developed. I feel like because we passed a master plan that eliminated the expansion of disc golf, we took out a lot of the other amenities that we had originally been planning, opening up the road to where option two, I believe, just past the existing shelter is a good compromise, um, to where this becomes a little bit more of a, a park that's, um, accessible by the community, and particularly, I actually think that this is a much bigger ADA issue than it is anything else. If I'm in a wheelchair, or I have a disability, there's no way for me to enjoy any part of Warner Park in its current state, um, and that's an issue.
I, um, have been an advocate in the past for keeping this park closed, um, and, but I think it's time, after fifty years, to try to open it to, on a limited basis, and I basically agree with what Jared just said, that we try it, and if it doesn't work, we close it again.
Now, I wanted to stay focused a little bit on the budget end of this. This is a master plan, so what we're voting on tonight here is not to fund a road or new park benches or anything else. It just means that the intent is to eventually do that, and that might not happen for a couple of years based on our budget constraints. So, so, you know, that, that's where I'm at. I mean, a master plan is basically the ideal state where you wanna be in some future, and that could be ten years out, and, and unfortunately, this could wind up like the bridge that was mentioned, because there is no, there is no money for it. And so, um, based on that, you know, if there was a monetary price tag on this tonight, I might look at it differently, but, but I understand it's just a master plan, and, and hopefully, you know, with Eddie's great management of the park system, uh, this will eventually get put in place in some fashion with the details.
So if people are dissuaded from the use of the park, it's largely due to, "I don't have any place to park." Now, secondarily, you have to ask yourself, "What are you accessing? What is it I'm doing when I go there?" You know, what is there to do? You're not going there to the swimming pool, uh, you're not going there to play tennis. This is a different kind of park. And I just, the, the, the part that is owners, once you take that gate off, then it's done. You're gonna ask the RCPD to do it, you're gonna ask the Parks and Rec, "Well, why don't you just send a guy up there to close that boom at, uh, at sundown?" I mean, these are all expenses that we don't want. The, as some people pointed out, we already have access. All you have to do is go to the city website and get the key, if you want some kind of an event, a wedding, or some, a Boy Scout event up there. That's what the place is made for. You know, we don't contemplate having hordes of people go around. That's not what it's for. It's a quiet place where there's birds and animals and so on that you can walk through. So, I don't like either one or two. I just want to keep the thing the way it is.
I'll make a motion, uh, Mayor, I move that we approve the Warner Memorial Park Master Plan dated November twenty nineteen as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, which proposes opening Warner Park Road to the extent shown in option two.
All right. Call the rule, please.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
No.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
I guess yes.
Motion carries four to one.
This is a discussion item. It'll be the overview of the Manhattan Rental Housing Forum held on October twenty-seventh, discussing on improving the tenant landlord relationship and other issues related to rental housing, and it's Marstel Assistant City Manager.
And so what I wanted to highlight for you was that the city commission, um, directed the city staff to do some engagement throughout the city to understand what the landlord-tenant relationship is and some of the resources available, and so we worked in partnership with the Student Government Association at Kansas State, and we held a rental housing forum on October twenty-ninth on the K-State campus in the K-State Student Union, and the goals of the, um, forum were pretty simple, really to understand the landlord and tenant perspectives on rental issues in Manhattan, as well as raise awareness about resources that are available to enhance the tenant landlord relationship. As we highlighted back then, the recent numbers from the rental registration program is there currently are thirteen thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dwelling units registered in the program from eighteen hundred owners, which represent about four thousand eight hundred actual addresses in the community. And so also, we highlight that our Risk Reduction Department is doing the registration violations, but that could be for some of the-
but that could be for some of the code enforcement services related to yards landscaping, but also the housing violations, and then even how they implemented one court action. And so what I want to highlight for you now was the information that K-State gathered from the renter community, and you'll see there are 143 respondents, 60 were students and about the other half, there are 59 that were staff members. Keep that in mind as you think about some of the data that we go through here. Again, some of the students were older, juniors and seniors, then you see the breakdown by male, female. Here's the number one concern, we talked about what is the decision factor that goes into the renters in Manhattan from this sample? And so price matters. Price was the number one issue as to how people found their housing in Manhattan for this group. Then also you look at, the second one was overall condition. They kind of made an assessment, is this the overall condition I want to live in? We asked the simple question, do you read your lease agreement? And 89% of the respondents said yes, they do. So we thought that was important to make sure that people are understanding how they go in to the tenant landlord relationship with the lease being the basis of that. Also, we asked, do they do a walkthrough and are things documented when they go through the walkthrough? And so some said yes, and it's documented 60%. They said yes, but it was not documented for 12% of those, and then no for 28 of the respondents. What we also found out, and this was in a headline after the forum in the Manhattan Mercury, where the respondents of these renters said they did not know that the city had a rental inspection service or that you could call and require or ask a free inspection. So that was an eye-opening, I think, for me and for some of the students there and other renters. Then we kind of went into, how do they view the unit that they currently live in? 75% of them that they're extremely or somewhat satisfied, and there are also 11 respondents or 8% that were extremely dissatisfied. So you kind of get a sense of, people generally like the unit that they're in. And so what we saw, time with K-State, some of their key renter takeaways, is that websites are a commonly used tool for rental property, that's how people go and find basically their main resources. And when we talk about resources, the website seems to be it. Renters care more about price and condition than location, we wondered if location would rise or not. And then the vast majority, as we highlighted, don't know that Manhattan has a voluntary rental inspection program. And then again, 25% witnessed the landlord retaliation.
Before you move on, who took this survey? Was it the people who came to the forum or was it different?
No, this was beforehand. SGA sent it out, it was in KSU Today was one of the forums, SGA's network of social media and other things, so it was student promoted and K-State administration promoted.
Did they gather any demographics when they did that?
We got the year in school, male, female, and faculty staff.
Okay.
See, I can give you some more of the detailed background on it. We went to the landlord, and we used, again, the landlord database of 1,800 emails. And from that, looking at the demographics, we got back 129 responses, and we asked if they were actually the property owners, or if they worked for a property management company, or if they worked for a real estate company with property management, to kind of really get down to some of the demographics of who is replying back to us. And so 107 of them are the actual physical property owners. Then we also asked, what is the makeup of their tenant? We offered a couple categories, but the majority, 53%, were KSU students, not surprising. When we hear about the tenant landlord relationship, a lot of times people think it goes sour, and so people don't get their safety deposit back or security deposit back or cleaning fee or whatever, damage deposit. And so 68% of the landlords say they almost always have returned the security deposit.
Did we ask that same question to the tenants?
That one, we did not.
What is my, what is my incentive to tell you that I, as a landlord, to tell you that I didn't return part of the security deposit? Other than just being nice and honest?
Like any survey.
Okay.
Any survey in that regard. And then we also talked about, some people say the term slum landlords are not maintaining their units, we think the conditions aren't up to standard. And so we really kind of wanted, again, to get just what their impression was, and we gave them a range of how many dollars they spent annually to maintain each individual unit, not just as a whole. And so you see the responses there, about 58%, you take the last two columns there, spent more than $1,000 per unit per year. And some reported they spent more than $1,500. That could be a new stove, that could be a cleaning service, that could be new windows, it could vary. But it at least says overall that the landlords are telling us they are investing some amount in their unit each year. And then we wanted to just kind of get a sense, are renters being evicted? And so we asked over the last two years, how many have they evicted? And it said 67% had not had to evict or terminate in the last two years anyone from their units. And they had some others who didn't want and whatever, but here's the reasons why. And basically, 84% of the renters were evicted for failure to pay rent. And so that was the leading indicator, but you see some others, property destruction, illegal activity, whatever it may be, but the primary one was failure to pay. And here's the key landlord takeaways. Landlords are on social media, this is where we think is a good place to build the tenant- landlord relationship. Landlords are investing in their properties each year. Nearly 70% have not evicted or canceled a lease. 66% have concerns of the local rental market. 73% say the housing quality is good or excellent, and 97% think that their units are good or excellent. So then, kind of the overall, I'll invite Jansen Penny, the Student Government President at K-State, and Justin Watkins, the Student Chair of the SGA Intergovernmental Relations Committee, to come up and join me and give you their perspective as an overview. But we have on here kind of the overall panel forum and takeaways. When we had the panel discussion, there was some robust conversation, and I do want to again thank K-State for their partnership and collaboration on this forum, for the student government to work hand in glove with us and help, I think it provided for a more robust forum and input, and I think we all walked away better for it. And I think these are the takeaways that Justin can talk about, and he has some proposals from the K-State perspective.
Yeah, absolutely. So as you can see here, property management is consistently changing hands, Manhattan rental property don't appear to have a large presence on the internet and resources are lacking for tenants. Other communities and universities have other resources that are easier to find. KSU doesn't provide adequate services for off-campus housing. We do have an off-campus resource, student worker who works 10 hours a week. That has kind of been in question about how adequate that is. The city needs to do a better job highlighting its rental inspection service. As was shown in that survey, 75% of people didn't know that we had a rental inspection program. The city should consider some type of language requirements and lease attendments about inspection services and laws against landlord retaliation. And so we'll kind of talk about that. So one of the big emphasis's that I've had in my time as GR Chair is working to help students who live off-campus have the resources that they need with, from the university and from the city. And so that kind of started with working with Dennis to do this off-campus housing summit.
And overall, really just to add on that, I think we all can agree that there are areas to improve. There are areas to improve on the K-State side, on the city's side, as us, like me being a renter as well and being more informed as a student renter, as a faculty renter. And so really finding out what those next steps are, and I think here are very two great, two great options that we can look at as far as moving that, moving that conversation forward.
All right. Well, thanks, everybody. We're adjourned.